Good morning, everyone. This is Melanie Alexander with the ASRS. Thank you for joining us. We are nearing the scheduled start time of the ASRS Board meeting. I want to take just a moment to perform a quick check for those joining us on Zoom and determine if we have all of our trustees, presenters, and key personnel present. Please bear with us just a moment.
Just, just, okay.
Chairperson Miller, trustees are present. It is nine oh five. We're ready to start at your discretion. And once the meeting has been called to order, the official roll call has been taken. If I can take a moment just to read the meeting guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting of the Arizona State Retirement System Board of Trustees on November twentieth, twenty five to order this morning. Please call the roll.
Thank you. Will the following individuals please confirm you are present at the meeting by stating here as I call your name? Michael Miller.
Here.
Weber is not here yet. Tom Connolly.
Here.
Ashley DiMaggio Reese.
Here.
Chuck Essex.
Here.
Renee Gyan.
Here.
Renee Gyan.
Gee.
Here.
We cannot hear you, Mr. Gyan.
Oh, hello?
I can, I can hear.
You are present. Thank you. Diane Landis.
You.
Jay Pitkounas.
Here. Here.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gyan, could you try that one more time?
Sure. Hello?
Thank you very much. Okay.
Present.
Miller. Now, if I can take a moment to read the meeting guidelines. Thank you. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed to the public. All speakers, please remember to identify yourself before speaking. Unless you are speaking, all mics should be muted to eliminate any background noise. All cell phones and smart devices should be set to silent once motions are made. I will take a vote by roll call. Once completed, the chair will announce whether the motion has passed to ensure that the meeting minutes are documented accurately. All presenters, please refer to the page numbers of the packet found in the upper right-hand corner of each page as you move through your presentation so the attendees can follow along. If we have any members of the public wishing to speak, you will have the opportunity to do so under the call to the public agenda item fourteen. As a reminder, if a trustee needs to leave the meeting early, please be sure to verbally announce that so we can mark it accordingly in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to agenda item number two, the consent agenda. If there are no corrections or additions to those minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion by Tom Connolly and a second by Diane Landis, I will take a roll call vote for the motion to approve the consent agenda. Please answer IRNA when I call your name. Michael Miller.
Aye.
Whoever, excuse Tom Connolly.
Aye.
Ashley DiMaggio Reese.
Aye.
Chuck Essex.
Aye.
Renee Gyan.
Aye.
Diane Landis.
Aye.
Jay Pitkounas.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairperson Miller. The vote has been taken.
Thank you. With that, we now move to agenda item number three, presentation discussion and appropriate action regarding the ASRS twenty twenty six proposed legislative and rulemaking initiatives. So let's see. Mr. Mattson, do you kick this one off?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Jessica Thomas, Government Relations Officer for the Arizona State Retirement System. We have two agenda items here, the first being the presentation discussion and appropriate action for the twenty twenty six regulatory agenda. This relates to the rules. The regulatory agenda that we are proposing for the calendar year twenty twenty six is pretty simple. It has one rulemaking that actually relates to a five-year review report that was approved by the Governor's Regulatory Review Council earlier this year. It relates to Articles One, related to the retirement system, Article Two, related to the health insurance premium benefit, the Article Four, related to practice and procedure before the board, and Article Five, purchasing service credit. We also have three separate five-year review reports scheduled for twenty twenty six. Those are related to Article Six, regarding public participation in rulemaking, Article Seven for contributions not withheld, and Article Nine for compensation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do any of the trustees have any questions regarding this? Not hearing any. I believe we need a motion, first of all, for item three A.
I move that the board approves the twenty twenty six regulatory agenda as presented.
A second.
Thank you. Hearing a motion by Diane Landis and a second by Chuck Essex, I will take a roll call vote for the motion to approve the twenty twenty six regulatory agenda as presented. Please answer IRNA when I call your name. Michael Miller.
Aye.
Miller, excuse Sir Weber, sorry. Tom Connolly.
Aye.
Ashley DiMaggio Reese.
Aye.
Chuck Essex.
Aye.
Renee Gyan.
Aye.
Diane Landis.
Aye.
Jay Pitkounas.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairperson Miller. The roll call has been taken.
Thank you. I believe we also need a motion regarding item three B.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for item three B, we are discussing and presenting an appropriate action for the legislative agenda for twenty twenty six. On this legislative agenda, we have three items that we are proposing the board consider. The first item is to define an employer's active employee group health and accident insurance program to clarify that an employee, excuse me, that a retiree who is receiving subsidized health insurance either as an employee or as the dependent of an employee of an employer is not eligible for the ASRS premium benefit subsidy. The second initiative would clarify that an employee of an employer who is initially, excuse me, who initially becomes eligible to participate in the ASRS after the age sixty-five may elect to waive participation in the ASRS within thirty days after becoming eligible to participate in the ASRS. The third initiative would clarify that after receiving benefits for a total of twenty-four months, a member is considered to have a disability if the member is unable to perform any work for which the member is reasonably qualified based on objective medical evidence. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Yes, sir.
On point three, what exactly are we clarifying? What's being clarified? What's changing?
So, Mr. Chair and Member Connolly, so currently there is a statute that says that they have to continue to have objective medical evidence to be considered disabled if they have received those benefits within a twenty-four month period over the course of five years. This legislation would remove that five-year period and say that you would be considered to be disabled if you have received twenty-four months of payments regardless of the time period that you've received those twenty-four months of payments. It removes that five-year period.
Reasonably qualified work. Reasonably qualified part is the same as before.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Not hearing any. I'd entertain a motion for item three B. Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve the two thousand twenty-six legislative agenda as presented.
A second. Thank you. Hearing a motion by Tom Connolly and a second by Ashley DiMaggio Reese, I will take a roll call vote for the motion to approve the twenty twenty-six legislative agenda as presented. Please answer IRNA when I call your name. Michael Miller.
Aye.
Sir Weber, Tom Connolly.
Aye.
Ashley DiMaggio Reese.
Aye.
Chuck Essex.
Aye.
Renee Gyan.
Aye.
Diane Landis.
Aye.
Jay Pitkounas.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairperson Miller. The vote has been taken.
Thank you. With that, we move to agenda item number four, presentation discussion and appropriate action regarding Government Finance Officers Association's Financial Reporting Awards for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four. And Mr. Mattson, are you going to kick this one off?
No, I'm going to turn it right over to Erica and Sally, if I may. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Oh. Chairperson Miller and members of the board, my name is Erica Serin. I'm the Chief Financial Officer here at Arizona State Retirement System. Today, I'm presenting two agenda items that are in support of the ASRS's financial reporting requirements. So annually, the ASRS issues three significant financial reports. So the first is our annual comprehensive financial report, what we call the ACFR, which includes an unmodified independent auditor's opinion and is intended to provide reliable information for decision-making, to ensure compliance with legal requirements, and is a means of measuring the responsible stewardship of the assets of the ASRS. The second report is what we call our GASB sixty-eight and seventy-five report, which also includes an unmodified independent auditor's opinion and supports our participating employers by providing information that they need to meet their annual reporting requirements. Finally, our popular annual financial report, what we call our PAFR, is a simplified version of financial information that's presented in our ACFR and offers an accessible overview of the ASRS's financial activities for those seeking a less detailed summary. So of these three reports I've just listed, two of them are eligible for submission to the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFPA, for awards. So our first agenda item is to share with you that we have received the awards for our June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four reporting period. So we received both the GFPA's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four ACFR for the thirty-sixth consecutive year. And further, we have received the GFPA Award for Outstanding Achievement for the June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four PAFR. Pleased to note that this marks the thirteenth consecutive year that we've been recognized for the quality of our PAFR. So as noted in the Agenda Items cover memo, the ASRS has a longstanding tradition of excellence in financial reporting. This accomplishment demonstrates the teamwork involved in preparing the reports and facilitating the annual audit conducted by our external auditor, auditor Clifton Larson Allen. It is the result of the committed efforts of our general accounting team within the Financial and Employer Services Division, supported by our colleagues in the Investment Management Division and Strategic Communications. So our third report, what we call our GASB report, does not have an award opportunity with GFPA, but remains essential for both the ASRS and our participating employers. This report provides audited information that our employers need to prepare and issue their own audited financial statements. This report is a culmination of significant teamwork involving our external auditors, our external actuaries, our internal financial reporting team, the participating employers that have been selected for our census testing, and the ASRS Internal Audit Division, which conducts the critical census data testing. So to conclude our presentation on this agenda item, I want to say thank you to the dedication of the Board of Trustees for recognizing the financial reporting as an agency priority, as well as the dedicated members of the ASRS that have contributed to this accomplishment. So thank you.
First of all, thank you for all of that hard work and dedication. It's outstanding that ASRS maintains that high standard of excellence and providing things in a timely manner for everyone that's involved. So anyone else have any comments or questions?
Thank, thank you to everyone who is involved in helping make us shine. So it's wonderful work and great track record of success and recognition.
Thank you for that.
I concur. Congratulations. Quite an accomplishment.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so that concludes that agenda item. I don't think that there's a motion or anything that I can roll into the next one, if that's okay?
Fine.
Okay. So we're rolling to the next agenda. Item five is, I'm happy to report that I've already covered most of it in the prior one, but now we're talking about our June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five financial reports. So the primary purpose of this agenda item is to have our external auditors, Clifton Larson Allen, present the opinions and the required communications for this year's financial audits and be available for additional questions and comments from the board for additional clarification on this topic. And I wanted to note that in your materials, you will find our June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five ACFR, PAFR, and GASB sixty-eight. That's why it is such a large board book this time. Our auditors issue opinions and required communications related to two of these reports to both the ACFR and the GASB sixty-eight seventy-five report. Our PAFR is also being presented as it is information extracted from the ACFR, and it is a significant report for external use, but our auditors do not issue an opinion or any required communication on the PAFR. So finally, before I turn this over to CLA, I want to point out that there are no significant changes from the prior year. Of note is that at the end of the fiscal year, there were three employers participating in our contribution prepayment program. I would like to recognize Sally Feng, our ASRS Controller, and Jessica Tucker's in the back here, our financial reporting manager who really ran the whole thing for us. They were key drivers in coordinating the effort and ensuring both the audit and the reporting processes were completed timely and accurately. So next, I would like to introduce Brittany Smith. Is she on? She is not on. Okay. Okay. Um, yes, we communicated last night, so she, okay. So at this point.
May I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Chairman, the auditor apparently has got a problem with the link. What I would suggest is we close this agenda item, move on, and he prepared to recall the agenda item so the external auditor can give her comments.
That would be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will move to agenda item six, which is presentation discussion and appropriate action regarding the ASRS Annual Actuarial Evaluations and resulting contribution rates. So. Good morning.
There we go. Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Paul Wood, I think I forgot my name tag. I apologize. Paul Wood with Gabriel Roder Smith. I've been here a few times, so very happy to be back. It's nice and cool outside, which I wasn't expecting when we landed last night. Along with me today is Cassie Rappaport. Cassie is a consultant on our Southwest Pension Team at GRS. She's been working behind the scenes on the ASRS valuations for quite some time now, and so just happy to have her with me. If we go to the next slide, we just talk about what we're going to discuss today. There'll be a few items. First, we're going to do the actuarial refresher. It's always fun to just revisit, go back to basics, think about why we're here, and what role does the actuary play for you as a board of the Arizona State Retirement System? Then Cass is going to walk us through the valuation results. We'll go through the plan, results, the LTD and the system, and then look at the aggregate contribution rates ultimately for your approval at some point today. And then when we were here back in July, I think it was July, we talked a little bit about the PBI, and so I wanted to provide an additional analysis on the PBI to give the board a sense of where it's heading and what short-term rates of return could do to our PBI over the next year or two. So we can just go ahead and jump right in, two slides forward. It's actually hidden up there what page of the agenda that is, but slide four of the GRS presentation, sixty-eight of seven twenty-four. The question that I feel like I get a lot, and I've probably said it here before, is, you know, why did you invite us? I hear that a lot, both personally and professionally. Why am I here? But when we think about a pension plan in its most basic terms, how do we define success? And success is the ability to pay those benefits when they become due for all of our members. And this is before we even talk about any assumptions, any funding policies, methods, any of that. Is, are we able to pay those benefits when they become due for our members? And so where does the actuary come into play? So the first piece that is really vital is that we're going to help you determine and assess the contributions that are coming into the plan. And then we're going to monitor the progress, and we're going to look at where we were last year, where we are this year, and what kind of path that we follow to get from that beginning to the endpoint. And then we'll provide advice on how to improve sustainability, you know, not only through just strengthening the funding policy, which you have a great funding policy, but also looking at the assumptions and methods and making sure that we're using the model practices for both of those items. On the next slide, this is the presentation in the board meeting each and every year where we present the actuarial valuation. And so what is the primary purpose of that valuation? Again, going back to that contribution rate, so determining how much money should be contributed into the plan come July one, twenty twenty-six. We look at the actuarial liabilities and the assets, and then we provide the funded status of the plans. We compare those two numbers to each other. And then again, we analyze those changes over time. We do this gain-loss analysis each and every year to figure out again how we got from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And then every four or five years, we'll do the experience study, which we covered in July, where we look at the longer-term trends and see if we need to make any adjustments to our valuation based upon those longer-term trends. On the next slide, slide seventy. This is the, I'm sure I've talked about this here, but this is my favorite equation in all of pension funding. It's super important to understand. C plus I equals B plus E. So contributions plus investment earnings over the long run have to equal benefit payments plus expenses. If we drill down a little bit into each of these items on our right-hand side of the equation, that expenses plus benefits, you know, those are pretty well-known. Those are defined. We're at a defined benefit plan, so the benefits are defined in statute. We have a pretty good handle on what we expect those benefit payments to be. And so you can almost think of that side of the equation as being fixed. Whereas if we go to the left-hand side of the equation, those two items are both going to vary depending on experience. Obviously, investment return, very volatile. You know, there's going to be good years, there's going to be bad years, there's going to be years where we hit our seven percent assumption right on the dot, but there's going to be a lot of ups and downs. But the beauty of the way that you fund your plan is that that C portion of the, of the equation there is going to adjust for good or bad experience. So if we have a year in which the investments are really high, it's going to put a little downward pressure on that contribution, but in years where the investments may not meet the level that we were expecting, it's going to push the contribution up a little bit, and it's always going to keep us on path to become fully funded over the long run. On the next slide, how do the assumptions factor into each of these items? So the true cost of your plan is going to be borne out by actual experience. So how members actually retire, how they terminate, how are retirees, how long they, they live? That's going to be dictating the true cost of your plan. But the assumptions that we have underlying all this helps us to model what could potentially happen, and those assumptions are our best estimate of future anticipated experience. And so those assumptions help us with the timing of the contribution, the pattern of the contribution, and then what are our future expectations on those contributions? And obviously, you need something pretty solid for you to make a decision on. I mean, we're making pretty big decisions here as a board And obviously, you need something pretty solid for you to make a decision on. I mean, we're making pretty big decisions here as a board with a very large population of members that are relying on those good decisions. On the next slide, if we had poor assumptions, this is Slide 72. If we had poor assumptions, it's going to lead to poor outcomes. And we've made a ton of progress since 2016, 2017 on strengthening those assumptions. So coming down on our rate of return assumption, which was at 8%. The mortality was a static mortality, so it wasn't taking into consideration that future generations are going to live longer. And then the PBI was not funded at all. So those are three huge changes that have been made just over the last eight years that the board has done, which has really strengthened our assumption set. Because we, as actuaries, we always say you can never out-assume the true cost of the plan. You know, so it's always going to come back to get us one way or the other. That true cost will always be there. And as you know, it's important that we do look at these things every few years, every four years now is our schedule, where we look at all these assumptions and make sure that we're in the right, on the right path. And if we're not on the right path, then we can make some adjustments to get us back on that correct path. On the next slide, shifting gears, just to touch to the assets. When you open up our very enthralling valuation report, there's going to be a couple of different asset values. There's actually three asset values now in your actuarial valuation reports. The first being that market value of assets. Now, certainly in the long run, that's going to be the most important metric in terms of assets, because that's what's actually in the bank that's available to pay our benefit payments. But the one issue with the market value of assets is there's a lot of volatility, you know, so there's going to be ups and downs on that. And so as a result, on the next slide, we as actuaries calculate what's called the actuarial value of assets. And this is a metric and a calculation that smoothes out that volatility and recognizes the gains and losses in our assets every year over a 10-year period. And so what this is going to do for us is it's going to filter out all of the noise. It's going to help us zero in on what is the trend of our assets, and then we're going to make better decisions based upon that. Because if we're making decisions in, say, a very down year, we may overreact and say, oh, boy, we need to cut benefits, or contributions are going to go skyrocketing. Or if we're a very good year, we say, let's give away the farm, and let's, you know, give everyone massive benefit enhancements. So we want to avoid those situations where we make decisions on really high highs or really low lows. And on the next slide, 74, 75, sorry. This is a nice, long history. I mean, we're over 20 years now of history on the comparison of the market value versus the actuarial value. And so if I didn't have them labeled, I think it would be pretty easy for you to look up there and say, okay, the green one is clearly the market value, and the blue one is the actuarial value. But you'll notice that the green line is kind of oscillating around that blue line. The blue line is really giving us what is the trend of those assets over the long run. And so then, again, we're making our decisions right now based upon that blue line, so that we don't get caught up in the volatility. On the next slide, Slide 76. Now we'll start talking a little bit about the liability side of the equation, so the actuarial evaluation process. And so we get all these different inputs. So the census data comes from stat, the asset data is compiled, the benefit provisions are all laid out in statute, the assumptions are approved by the board through the experience study process, the actuarial cost method, which helps us determine how much of our active member liability has been accrued and how much will be accrued in the future. It's a very standard cost method that we use, and then we overlay the funding policy on that. So all of these inputs go into our valuation process, and then ultimately the output, which is on the next slide, are these key actuarial terms that we calculate. So the first is the present value of future benefits. This is by far the largest number in your report. This is, we calculate this number by projecting out all of the expected benefit payments for everyone that's in the system as of the valuation date. And then we discount that cash flow stream back into today's dollars using 7%. And this represents the present value of every single benefit that we think could be payable to our membership. The second piece is the normal cost. Normal cost is simply the cost of accruing one year's worth of benefits. So what is the value of the benefit that someone earned when they had five years of service, and then they go to six years of service? And that's the normal cost piece. The actuarial accrued liability, this is where we take that big present value benefit number, and we split it up between what has been accrued in the past and what we expect to accrue in the future. And when you start to think about different types of members we have in our plan, for, say, a retiree, that present value of benefits is equal to the accrued liability. So they've accrued all of their benefits because they're collecting their benefits now. They're in retirement status. Whereas an active member, their present value of benefits, it hasn't fully been accrued yet. And so there's a portion of that, that the cost method helps us determine, that has already been accrued, and then everything that's left over are those future normal costs that are going to be accrued as the member works through their career. We already talked about the actuarial value of assets, again, a 10-year smoothing. I don't have too many plans that have a 10-year smoothing, but you've had it in place for so long that it has worked really well for your plan, especially when we look at that long 20-year history of what that's done to that, relative to your market value. It's been very successful for the ASRS. And we calculate the unfunded actuarial accrued liability. So this is just the difference between the accrued liability and our asset figure. We also calculate a funded ratio, which is the ratio of our assets to our liability. So what portion of our assets are covered by, or what portion of our liabilities are covered by our assets? And then finally, the, I think, what the biggest outcome here is what is the actuarially determined contribution? And I think, as we all know, for your plan, the actuarially determined contribution is contributed every year, and the employee and the employer split that equally. So the employee takes on some of that contribution risk. So if it goes up, then the employee has to pay a little bit more. If it goes down, then the employee will pay less. On the next slide, I try to keep equations out of presentations because not everyone loves math as much as Cassie and I do, but there's just a couple of them that, you know, if you wanted to see how these numbers were actually calculated. So the unfunded liability, simply that accrued liability minus the actuarial value of assets. And then the funded ratio there is assets divided by the accrued liability. And so these are really key metrics that we keep an eye on. And I think one of the really neat things that we're going to show you later is that the change in the unfunded accrued liability, not only what it's been over the last year, but also where it's heading. You know, so we've been in here the last few years. We've kind of sat around the same unfunded accrued liability point. That was almost by design through the funding policy, and now we've sort of reached that precipice where we're starting to fall off. Money's coming in to start paying that down pretty significantly. So this is a super key metric that we're going to look at to make sure that we're making good progress, not only on the funded ratio, but on paying down that unfunded accrued liability amount. Slide 15. A lot of times we're asked, you know, we're making the actuarially determined contribution. We're doing all these things right. How come we still have an unfunded liability? And so there's usually a few reasons for that. Of the first, and this is the most impactful for your plan, actually, especially going back to 2017, is changing in expectations. You know, so not only did our expectations on returns on the assets come down, but also, you know, we added in the PBI, so that was a different expectation, and then also a different expectation on how long members are going to live. And I took a look at this this last night, and since 2017, we've added about almost a little bit over $8 billion in unfunded liability. And like seven and a half of that is from changing expectations. So almost all of it is from the fact that the assumption set that was used in the past does not represent our best anticipation of future experience today. The second piece, experience not meeting the assumption. So this could be anything from the assets under or underperforming, say, salary increases that are higher than expected or demographic experience that differs than what we would expect. And for your plan, the assets have just done, you know, tremendously since 2017, so that's been a net positive for the plan. But one of the areas we've had a little bit of a headwind is on salary increases. But as we've talked about in the past, that's not always a terrible thing. It means that, yes, the projected benefits are going to be higher, but it also means that more contribution dollars are going to be coming into the plan. So it's a little bit of an offsetting item. And then in terms of the other experience, the demographic experience, it's been relatively small over the last eight years. And then if there were any unfunded benefit increases or maybe subsidized service purchase items that were out there, this hasn't been a massive issue for your plan or really an issue at all over the last eight years or so. You may be going further back, there was, you know, the service purchase might have been subsidized a little bit, but that's all been taken care of now. So we're, you know, certainly in model practices for that. On Slide 16, we just wanted to talk for a moment about how we fund those, sorry, Slide 80 of 724, how we fund those unfunded liabilities. And so I think the easiest example that we can always point to when we think about funding our unfunded liabilities is our mortgage that we have on a house that we may take out. You know, so we know that we owe this money to the bank. What's the plan for paying off that money? And typically, on a mortgage, it's a 30-year amortization where the payments just stay level every single month for 360 months. It can be a little bit different when we're funding public sector pension plans. So typically, instead of funding as that level dollar amount, we're funding as a level percent of pay. And I have an example just to go over for that. When you initially set up your funding policy back in 2013, the $9.8 billion in unfunded liability that was around at that time was amortized over a 30-year period. So there wasn't a lot of expectation that we would make a whole lot of progress on paying down that unfunded liability for the first, you know, nine or 10 years. You think about when you look at that mortgage amortization schedule, all those payments upfront are all going to pay toward, pay interest, and you're making a lot of gains on your principal. But then once you get to year 20, year 15, year 10, you're starting to make, all that, that money is going towards paying off principal. And that's about the point where we're at right now with funding that big liability that was around in 2013. The best practices now say that you amortize over a period of 20 years or less. And so all of our new gains and losses, which I'll show you in a moment, we meet that model practice. So we've really come down and made progress on the amortization periods as well when you think about funding this plan. On Slide 17, this is just the example of the level percent versus level dollar. And so what we have here are two different cash flow streams that if you were to look at them in today's dollars, they have the exact same present value. So if we discounted these all back at 7%, the dark blue lines, those in the level dollar payment, so they remain stable as a dollar amount every year going forward. The level percent of pay are the gray lines there, and you can see that they start out lower and then grow over time. And the theory behind this, why we use this level percent of pay in the public sector, is that we want contribution rates that are stable from year to year. And so as payroll increases, as do the contributions going into the fund, and when you divide contributions by payroll, it's a level, it's level as a percent of pay. And you kind of take it one step further and look at it from a little higher level. It also remains level as a percent of the budget. You know, so our employer, our employer's budget, our state's budget, even our employees' budget tend to grow over time. And so we're not taking up any more or any less of that budget by funding on this level percent of pay method. Slide 18, this just talks a little bit about, 82 of 724, talks a little bit about the layered amortization policy that ASRS uses itself. And so we use this process of calculating gains and losses each and every year, and then setting up an amortization base for that particular gain and loss in a year. And we have a very set period of time over which we're going to pay that off. And so when we first took over, that was a 30-year amortization for these gains and losses. It went down to 25 years for the big plan, and is now at 20 years. And so it's, again, we're meeting the model practice now with our new gains and losses. The 401H and the LTD plan, they use a little bit of a shorter period. They use a 15-year period, which, you know, again, is, I think, really works for those two plans. Certainly, the 401H plan, the health subsidy plan, which you'll see is very well-funded, so I think that's working out rather well for them. The beauty of having this particular policy, we can see it play out on the next slide, on Slide 83, is that we have this beautiful schedule here that I like to think of this as the rings of a tree. And so we can go back and look at what happened in each of these years. And so we go back to the very first year that this was established back in 2013. Our initial amount was $9.8 billion in unfunded liability, and there's a 30-year schedule that was set up to pay that down. And you can see that the balance remaining as of June 30, 2025 is still $9 billion. So what does that tell us? It tells us that over this first, you know, 10 to 13 years here, we haven't made a lot of progress on paying that down, because then that was expected. But now we're past the point of this, what we call negative amortization, and we expect for this to start running down rather quickly now as more of our payment goes towards paying on the principal instead of paying interest on the outstanding amount. There's a couple of items I think that are interesting here. If you look at the June 30, 2017 experience, or, sorry, assumption change, that was where we, you know, added roughly $4.4 billion in liability because of those changes that I mentioned earlier to the discount rate, the mortality, and the PBI assumption. In 2021, we had a pretty serious experience study as well. We came down from 7.5% to 7% on that discount rate. And that was a pretty big, a pretty big impact there, and we actually spread that out over three years to recognize the impact of that over a three-year phase-in. And that ended up being really successful, because we had some gains during that time that offset any of those increases that came in. And so the contributions did relatively level through that three-year phase-in period. So again, a nice success. So again, you can ladder this out, and we do this as part of our projections, where we know that in 17 years, that $9.041 billion as of the valuation date will be paid off, and that's going to drop off. It's going to lower the contribution. So regardless of what happens, in 17 years, the contributions are going to drop pretty significantly, and we'll demonstrate that in the projections here in a few minutes. And then you can start to see how the other bases will fall off and push that contribution rate down as we approach fully funded. So my last slide for a little bit, the next slide, Slide 84. Just wanted to talk for a moment conceptually about the actuarially determined contribution and how we arrive at this. And so it's really made up of three different pieces. So the very first piece is the normal cost. So we want to keep up with accruals. So as members are accruing benefits, we want to put contributions into the plan to keep up with those accruals. And if your plan were 100% funded, theoretically, all you would need to contribute is the normal cost amount. But we know that we're not 100% funded, so we have that outstanding unfunded liability. And we have a plan, which we just talked about on the prior slide, to pay that down. So we calculate that payment towards that unfunded liability. That's the second piece. And then the third piece is the administrative expenses piece. So there is a portion of the contribution that covers administrative expenses. This plan, and I think, you know, you all have seen this from some of the survey reports that have come out, done a very good job of really limiting these administrative expenses. It's assumed to be 0.25% of payroll every year. It's a pretty small number relative to the size of your payroll and to the size of your asset liability base. So we add all of these together, and that is what determines the actuarially determined contribution. And then will ultimately be our recommendation to start contributing or to continue contributing that with a slightly new rate come 1 July 2026. So with that, I've said a lot. Any questions or thoughts or comments?
Trustees, any questions or comments?
One question, and probably Paul gets it a lot from people. I work with school districts and school employees, and they certainly appreciate what the ASRS does for them. But it, just as a general statement, long-term, what is going to happen with the contribution rates? Will they stay level, decline, increase? What, as a general statement, what does the future look like?
So we'll show you some details on that to give you the high level of, you know, when we went back to that, what I call the rings on the tree chart there. When that very top base there drops off in 17 years, there will be a significant decrease in the contribution rate. So the first, the first step will be in 17 years. And then a couple of years after that, we'll see another step. And then a few years after that, when we reach fully funded, we'll just be at the normal cost, which is, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of, actually, I want to say it's, you know, around 12 or 13% in total. So it's going to come down significantly over the next, but we have to wait, you know, that's, this is one of the other issues. We have to give it some time, and we have to wait that 17 years, and then we'll start to see the fruits of all the labor that we put in, you know, going back to 2013.
If I may, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, would this be accurate that our current contribution rates in aggregate are approximately 12%? And in less than 20 years, we expect them to be approximately 7% per employee?
That's correct, yes.
And that, and that will be somewhat of a steady decline and then a big drop, or kind of a level rate and then a drop?
I think that's something that, that's to be determined. So if we were just to stick with the funding policy as it's written today, it would happen almost overnight. And, but I also don't think that that's the best way to approach this. And so when we get closer to that cliff, I think we need to have some discussions about how do we get from the 12% to the 7% in a reasonable period of time? And that means maybe starting a little bit early, or when we reach that cliff, keep the rates up a little bit and just come down systematically. But those are decisions and discussions that we're going to have to have, because not only is But those are decisions and, and discussions that we're going to have to have, um, because not only is it affecting the contributions that are, that our employees are making. But there's also going to be a lot of these investment decisions that are going to be impacted by the fact that we'll be in a much higher net, negative cash flow position. And so our liquidity is going to be different. And so there's going to be a lot of discussions around that, um, and you know, we're seventeen years away from that, you know, when is the right time to do it? A lot of people think, you know, seven to ten years is probably the right time to start having those discussions and to be pre- prepare for that. Uh, so we're still a few years away from that, but you know, it certainly is on the horizon.
Well, you'll probably have that question every year on the same issue or whatever, but at least it, it's a positive statement that it's moving in, it's, it's moving in the right direction. It's just a matter of when and how that movement occurs.
Exactly, yep. And, and I think that's, you know, whether it's next year or the year after, but we can, you know, start providing some education on what are, what are our potential options here? When, when should we target that date to start making that move? Uh, I think those would be, those would be really, uh, great conversations to have. I've, I've got a couple of clients that we're having them now because they're a little bit closer. You know, we're talking, you know, six or seven years now for those, for those clients. So, um, there's going to be a lot of work that's done on the cliff. Uh, prior to you hitting it, so we're going to get it right.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may add, this, uh, we are aware that there's going to be a, a s- a small decay in contribution rates going through time and in a pretty big fall. And the things that we're going to be thinking about in the future when we come to the board is the following. Number one, what, what will our funded status be? And I, what I would suggest is it's going to be including our unrecognized gains. So we've got unrecognized gains of about three point three billion dollars. So looking at that number as of June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five, that's, that funded ratio is approximately eighty percent. So the higher that gets, it, the, the more it would motivate me to have that discussion. That's number one. Uh, number two, whether or not we have confidence in the seven percent discount rate we're losing for our liabilities or whether at some point it might make sense to reevaluate that. We now think that's a conservative rate. We think if we reevaluated and moved it, maybe seven and a quarter might be, uh, but it, that, that may change in four years. But that would be another, uh, another issue to think about would be one of our, um, perspectives, a house view is mitigation. We talk about that every time we do evaluation or every time we do an asset allocation study is volatility of contribution rates. So to the extent that we are not getting, we're not meeting that, uh, mitigation of contribution rates by going relatively flat and then big fall. That's not mitigating contribution rates. That's almost contrary to what we're trying to do. We want to mitigate volatility of contribution rates. So the closer we get to above eighty percent funded, the more funds that we have that are unrecognized, the more confidence we have in the seven percent. And the closer we get to the period we're going to have the cliff, the more logical it is to discuss, hey, you want to mitigate contribution rate volatility, that's contrary to waiting for a cliff. So that's how I would think about it as director.
And we have the, the last three years, last year, I think it was twelve point two nine percent. Then it was twelve percent and now it's going to eleven point nine eight percent. So is, is that kind of a, an example of
Yes.
some of that slow movement?
Yes, yes. And we, basically we use three things to mitigate that contribution rate volatility. Most funds, you know, they think about the portfolio construction and portfolio construction is highly diversified and that mitigate, that's only one. And if you do that too much, you mitigate expected rates of return. Typically diversify into things that don't move much, which typically have lower rates of return. So as opposed to doing that, we consider two other things. And as Paul had mentioned, our, um, uh, implementation of gains and loss, amortization, if you will, is ten years. I think this, the average among government plans in the United States is probably five years. So we're, but it's worked out fantastic. Because of that, we have three point, significantly because of that, we have three point three billion dollars of unrecognized gains. So, um, tho- that all has to be considered. And then the third thing is amortization. We have amortized our, um, uh, unfunded status in our three plans in slightly different methods. For long-term disability and health insurance, we chose the fifteen years for a couple of reasons. One is because the impact of going short is actually pretty small. Because compared to the sixty billion dollars, only something like two and a half, three billion is health insurance. Something like, uh, let's say half a billion or less is long-term disability. So if we went down from twenty to fifteen, even to like ten years and we had a big shock, it would mean a tiny difference in our contribution rates. That's not the case with pensions. So to the extent you can mitigate or pay off that liability really, really quick and have mitigate, uh, small contribution rate volatility, we did it fifteen years, long-term disability, fifteen years health insurance. But to the extent that it would, uh, not align with mitigation rate, mitigation of contribution rate volatility, we kept it at twenty years.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, um, go ahead.
My recollection is, there actually was quite a bit of lifting through seventeen. Seemed like almost every year we were entertaining positive changes. Along, along that line of thinking, uh, are there any other changes in methodology, methodologies or assumptions that we should be thinking about for the future? Or are we in pretty good shape in that regard, do you think?
Yeah, so I, I think of the, the big three being the discount rate, as Paul mentioned, you know, all the analysis that, uh, the house views, the, um, investment consultants all pointed to being able to hit that seven percent. Uh, so we feel very comfortable with where that's at today. The second one is mortality. Uh, we built a custom mortality table for your population. It's large enough to do that. And it's done a really great job and embedded in that is the expectation that, uh, future generations will live longer. So we don't see a need to, to move that at all. So that was another big piece. And then the third is the funding of the PBI. And so we do have a reserve in the liability to fund for the PBI. So those are really the big three. This last experience day we presented back in July, you know, the change was, I think it was two hundred and fifty-six million dollars. So just so much smaller than the, the two point eight, uh, or two point four the year and the twenty twenty-one and the four point four. So we expect future experience studies to be more of that, like just maintaining, you know, so we've lost all the weight, now we need to keep it off, you know, type of situation, so.
So, so, sounds like most of the real heavy lifting has been done, in other words.
Correct.
Um, and then the issue on the smoothing, uh, ten years. Uh, Paul, you think you said there's the, uh, standard industry is five? And everyone's comfortable with the tens where we are right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
And as Paul mentioned, it, it's been really successful for your plan. Like if, if we had a plan today that wanted to go with ten years smoothing, we'd probably caution against it. But because you've had it for so long and it's been working out so well, and certainly if we go back to that chart, you know, during the financial crisis, I mean, it, it really just kept our trend right online with where we thought it was. So, you know, there wasn't that big overreaction. And so, I mean, that's something that we do like to see. And then the fact that your plan is different than most plans in that the employees share fifty percent of the contribution. And so their rates changing every single year, having a little bit of a longer period of smoothing will help mitigate that volatility. There aren't many plans in the country that have that, that cost sharing that's built in there like that. So I think it makes a little more sense to to look at these strategies to mitigate that contribution volatility because we don't want to be impacting our employees uh, dramatically year to year.
So the recommendation to not do five, but do ten is mostly concerns the contribution rate volun- volatility for the employees?
Yeah, but I mean, that's a, that's a big piece of it, yeah. And so, you know, the, there's obviously pros and cons. You know, the, the shorter, the, the shorter the, uh, smoothing period. So if you say use a three-year smoothing period, you're going to have a lot more contribution volatility. But then at the same time, you would be a little quicker to react in a, in a poor situation. So in a big market downturn. The longer the period, less contribution volatility. But then, you know, everything comes with the trade-off. The trade-off there is you're a little slower to respond to, you know, to either good or bad. And we've had a run-up of good. And so that's why we have basically a three point three billion dollar cushion right now between our market value and our actuarial value. We don't see that big cushion in a lot of the plans that are using five-year smoothing right now.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may add. Could we go back, Paul? Can you call up your graph that you had? Just give the page number. And it had the funded status on actuarial value of assets and market value of assets over approximately twenty-three year period. And it showed the crossover point approximately every three-ish years.
Let's see, have we gotten there yet?
Yeah, it was back about, um, eight slides. Uh, I see my colleagues found it.
Slide eleven. Oh, yes, okay.
We envisioned what this would look like years ago. And when we had discussions, we said, if there's a crossover at between five and every approximately five and seven years, we would be comfortable with it. Meaning if it doesn't cross over, you're playing catch-up one way or the other between contribution rates that you want and contribution rates that you set. So we sat back and we said, we debated it, discussed it, and this is going back a, a, a long time. And, uh, uh, on, we estimated that approximately five to seven years, there would be approximately a crossover or tangency point, or at least close. You can see here it's approximately every three years. So even though we set it at ten years, so a ten-year smoothing period and we're prepared to have a disconnect between contribution rates, what we wanted to be that day and what they were going to be if you set them with a lower amortization period. We've got a, basically a tangency point or a close point or a crossover point approximately every three years, way better than what we expected. So we were beyond conservative of what we thought. And what that tells me is if you can get contribution rate volatility tiny by having really quick, uh, crossover points, a short time period before between where your actuarial value of assets and your, um, uh, market value of assets are, if you can do that, you don't have to take contribution rate volatility risk. You can mitigate that, absorb it, because two years later, if the market's shot, they typically come back. So that's how that was designed and that actually is much better than what we expected on the positive side. Thank you.
Comment that I would like to make is I think it would be through this conversation, um, to our advantage to communicate this especially to our, what I would call our young members. You know, that we hear a grumble about, you know, I'm giving twelve percent, blah, blah, blah. And to do this, for them to see where it basically is headed. Cause that's hard for, you know, I'm, I'll use teachers as an example for a first, second, third, fourth year teacher. You know, who are on the bottom of the pay scale and looking for more money. Um, and so I think a retention factor for, for teachers, retention factor for state employees. Um, to be able to communicate to our younger members where we're at and where this is designed to go. I think that's important.
Okay, and I'm going to look, I've got Nate is in the audience and Katie now is where he's typing. I can see him. I looked over when you were speaking and I see Nate typing away. Nate, you heard that comment? Would you follow up with either Katie or me or Jeremiah over the next week? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, well, that was the appetizer. It's time for the main event. Uh, we'll talk about, uh, the valuation results and I'll pass the mic over to Cassie.
Thanks, Paul, and good morning, everybody. Uh, so starting off, we can go to, yep, next slide, please. All right, perfect. So starting off, we're going to look at the plan actuarial valuation results for this year. Um, so there was favorable asset experience this year, as we know, about a nine point nine percent return on a market value basis. Uh, this translates to an eight point two percent return on that smoothed basis that we were just talking about over that ten-year period. So because that is above eight percent, those excess earnings will go into the PBI reserve, which we're going to talk about a little bit later in the presentation. Um, something else that we touched on is the three point four billion dollars in deferred investment gains that is currently available. Um, that will either be used in future years to either offset future losses or will be incorporated into the contribution rates over the next nine years to help bring those down a little bit. Uh, the funded ratio did increase this year and the UAL decreased by about four hundred and thirty-nine million dollars since the prior valuation. And the CPP or the Contribution Prepayment Program is currently valued at eighty-six million dollars. And there are three employers currently working with that. We can move on to the next slide. All right, so here we have the census data. This is the four oh one A and four oh one H plans combined. Uh, starting off with the active members on that first line there, you can see there was a little bit of a dip in membership this year. Um, about sixteen hundred less members than last year, but still hovering right around two hundred and twenty thousand. Um, despite the dip in active members, the projected payroll is still increasing from fourteen point four billion dollars last year to fourteen point nine billion dollars this year. Uh, the inactive members and annuitants both saw an increase in those groups this year. About a one point seven percent increase in the number of inactive members and around a three percent increase in the number of annuitants. Um, of course, the number of annuitants increased, so the annual benefits also increased from three point eight billion dollars last year to four billion dollars this year. And on page eighty-eight, we have this graph here, which shows us the market value returns over the last ten years, so from twenty sixteen through twenty twenty-five. That dotted purple line is the average compound return over the past ten years, and that's currently at eight point one percent. The green dotted line is the investment return assumption of seven percent. So as you can see, over the past three years, on a market value basis, we've exceeded that seven percent assumption. And over the past two years, we've actually exceeded that ten-year return of eight point one percent as well. Moving on to page eighty-nine. So here we have key metrics from last year's valuation and this year's valuation. Twenty twenty-four is on the left and twenty twenty-five is on the right. Uh, the increase in the UAL, or sorry, the decrease, like I said, decreased by about four hundred billion dollars from eighteen point seven billion dollars last year to eighteen point three billion dollars this year. We did see an increase in the funded ratio from seventy-four percent to seventy-five point six percent, again, on a smoothed value basis. Um, the normal cost did increase this year, but the amortization piece actually decreased. So those two pieces somewhat offset each other. So we only saw slight movement in that total contribution rate, which was twenty-three point seven two percent last year, increased by two basis points to get us to twenty-three point seven four percent this year. Looking at that rate on an employer-employee basis, it was eleven point eight six percent last year and eleven point eight seven percent this year. So very, very stable. Um, if we look at the funded ratio on a market value basis, we did pass eighty percent this year. So up from seventy-seven point two percent last year to eighty point two percent this year. If we include those CPP contributions that I mentioned earlier, that gets us up to eighty point three percent. So a slight increase on the funded ratio. On the next slide, we have the reconciliation of the UAL. So this is the change in the UAL during the year and what drove those changes. So as I mentioned, the total decrease in the UAL was four hundred and thirty-nine million dollars this year. And these are the components that made up that number. So the purple bars are losses. So those amounts are increasing the unfunded liability, whereas the green bars are gains and those are decreasing the unfunded liability. So starting with the normal cost, we saw an increase of two billion dollars on the unfunded liability due to normal cost this year. There was a one point three billion dollars due to interest. The greater than expected contributions decreased the UAL by about three and a half billion dollars. And favorable asset experience decreased the UAL by about six hundred and fifty million dollars. And that last bar there represents the liability experience during the year as well as the assumption changes that were incorporated to the valuation this year. The liability changes accounted for about a hundred and thirty million dollar increase in the UAL. And the assumption changes were about a quarter of a billion dollars for the UAL.
I just have one comment to this one. So the, those first three items, normal cost, interest and contributions, those are sort of our expected amounts. And if you want to look back at our presentation a few years ago, you would notice we'd see the same increase in normal cost, similar increase in the interest, but that contribution piece wasn't coming down far enough to, to offset those two items. And so this is showing us that now we're at a contribution amount that's going to be paying off, that's in excess of normal cost and interest. And that's the money that's going to go towards paying off that unfunded liability. And so it's starting to look a lot different than it did, you know, three or four years ago. And so it's a very positive sign. And again, something that, uh, that we think is, uh, it was, was what's going to move us in the right direction to pay off that unfunded liability.
Right, and on page ninety-one, here we have the reconciliation of the change in the contribution rate from last year to this year. So as of June thirty, twenty twenty-four, as I mentioned before, that rate was twenty-three point seven two percent. We're up this year to twenty-three point seven four percent. Um, the expected amount that we expected that rate to increase was point three eight percent. And that does include the assumption changes that were made this year. The favorable asset experience mostly offset that expected experience and brought the, um, contribution rate down about thirty-five basis points. Uh, pay increase, as we mentioned earlier, there were higher than expected salary increases again this year, although less than we've seen in prior years. Um, and that increase was offset by the greater than expected contributions. Looking at the last couple of lines, we have our demographic and other experience. Uh, demographic experience was unfavorable this year, but our other experience was favorable. And those two items combined resulted in a decrease of one basis point. So again, just two basis point difference between last year and this year, lots of offsetting experience. And on page ninety-two, so we have some And on page 92, so we have some long-term projections for you all. And I, you know, I think this is going to be really interesting because you can really see that unfunded accrued liability decreasing over the years. Uh, that is represented by the bars on the graph and the employee employer total contribution rate is represented by the lines there. So the blue values represent the projections based on last year's valuation and the red values are actually based on this year's valuation. So as you can see, the unfunded liability is decreasing on those bars there, and it's actually decreasing faster than it would have last year. So we're now projected to reach full funding by 2045, assuming all of our assumptions are accurate over the next few years. Um, so as Paul had mentioned before, we are now past the point of negative amortization and should actually start making progress on paying down that unfunded liability. And over to the right, we do also have the projected funded ratios and projected employee employer contribution rates, as I mentioned. And you can kind of see a side by side comparison where things were projected to be as of last year's val and where things are projected to be based on this year's results as well. Um, and on the line graphs, you can see contribution rates are staying relatively stable over the next few years. And then that large decrease is due to that UAL amount falling off. And you can see as we get closer to funding, the contribution rates start dropping as well. On page 93. Okay. So this is the stress test that we have here. So we wanted to stress the plan and see what would happen if we had a really great year of experience. Um, 10% return in fiscal year 2026. As you can see, that red line that represents the employee employer impact, if we were to get that 10%, those contribution rates are coming down over the next few years compared to the blue line, which is the baseline, just assuming that straight 7%. So it would cause a decrease in contributions and we would also be projected to reach full funding a couple of years earlier than 2045. In the next slide, we have, um, a different scenario. What if we only earned 4% in fiscal year 2026? And as you can see, that red line now representing the contribution rates has moved up to make up for that investment earnings loss there. Um, and now our unfunded liability is not being paid off as quickly, but is only pushed out one or two years compared to the baseline.
Just add one comment on this one. So this is C plus I equals B plus E in action, which is kind of neat to see. If we go back to the baseline, um, and then we make those stress testing changes on the investment return. So in the really good year where we have the 10 year, 10% return, the contributions are going to adjust and come down a little bit. And then on this, this slide right here, where the 4% return, our investment earnings go down. So as a result, our contributions are going up. So you can see the, that formula in action here on these particular charts.
All right, moving along to page 95. We're going to switch gears a little bit and talk about the LTD evaluation results for this year. So those were the planned results that we just covered. Um, we did see an increase in the accrued liability from $209 million to $216 million this year. We also saw an increase in the actuarial value of assets from $205 million to almost $221 million. And those increases actually caused a surplus for this year. So the plan, LTD plan is now over 100% funded. They're at 102.1% funding for this year. And they now have a surplus of $4.5 million instead of an unfunded liability. So the normal cost rate also decreased. We're at 0.18% for that. And the contribution rates for employers and employees decreased from 0.14% to 0.11% this year. Open claims and prior year claims paid both decreased and they have been decreasing over the past few years. And I think that's pretty much it for the LTD plan. Moving on to the system valuation results, um, I do want to note that these are more for reporting purposes only. So you'll see the actual accrued liability, market value of assets, um, the funded ratio, they're all decreasing currently and they are projected to exhaust those assets as a fiscal year 2030. Um, but even though those assets and the funded ratio are decreasing, these liabilities are funded through the plan. So there's no no reason for concern. It's just more of a reporting purpose that we show this exhibit. And finally, we have the aggregate results. So at the top there, you can see for the 401A plan, the contribution rate for employers and employees is 11.87%. There is no contribution for the 401H plan this year, since their amortization piece was actually higher than the normal cost. So there's a 0% contribution floor on the 401H plan. So in total, for 401A and 401H combined, we have that 11.87% plus the 0.11% from the LTD plan for a total contribution rate of 11.98% combined. Looking at the alternate contribution rate, that is 9.41% for the plan and about 0.4, 0.4% for the LTD plan for a combined rate of 9.45%. Um, that is because that is based on the UAL component only. And just as a reminder, that alternate contribution rate is used to pay contributions for rehired retirees. And at the bottom there, we have a summary of the funded ratios for all of the plans um, on an AVA and MVA basis, as well as with the CPP amounts. So again, the plan total funded ratio is 80.2% on a market value basis and the LTD plan is about 105.4% on a market value basis.
Ask a quickie question on those funded ratios. If we're reading in the media somewhere, when they're talking about pension plans and funded ratios in particular or on average, which one will they be using?
Uh, it should be the AVA.
AVA.
Yes, since that is what we use throughout our report. Again, that's what it's used to determine the contributions. That's what we use for all of our calculations. We do still include the market value because of course we know what those assets are and it's a good point of information.
Thank you.
I have a question on the alternate contribution rate. It's gone down now. Was up over 10%, now it's down to about nine, what, 9.45? Do you know what is causing that reduction?
Yeah, so.
It's not a bad, it's not a bad thing.
Yeah, in, in, we have the exact reason for it. So if we, you know, we go back to that, that chart where I showed you all those, the rings, the different layers. So those are, those payments towards those layers are expected to increase at, uh, well, either 2.7 or 2.85, depending on what year you're looking at it. And so our payroll has actually been growing by a lot more than that. And so those payments are only going up by two and a half or 2.8%. The payroll base that we use to calculate the rate is growing faster than that. And so it's pushing that rate as a percent of pay down. We're getting the same dollar amounts, the same expected dollar amounts, but it's just being applied to a, to a higher payroll now. So that's the reason it's pushing it down.
And have you given any thought to what, what's the future for that? Is it going to continue to be adjusted downward or is it variable?
So when we do our projections, we assume effectively that, that salary is going to grow how we were expected to grow. So at that 2.85%. So our projections pretty much assume that it will remain at that level for the next 17 years. And then that piece will drop off, drop, that'll be our first cliff. And then it'll drop even further, uh, in the future. So expected to remain, you know, should remain in that nine, nine and a half percent area, unless we have payroll growth that exceeds our expectations. And then it could come down a little bit. And then also on the flip side, if payroll grows a little slower, it could come back up a little bit as well. So, all right, thanks for all the consideration.
Right. Perfect. So to close out the value results, we just have a quick summary here. Overall ASRS, you know, has a solid funding policy. As we've seen, we're projected to have stable contribution rates in the coming years. Again, we have those $3.4 billion in deferred asset gains to be recognized over the next nine years. And CPP contributions increase the funded ratio by 0.1%. So overall, things are looking good. Things are moving in the right direction and all good news. Now with that, I'll turn over to Paul to talk about the PBI.
Yeah, maybe we'll pause there to see if they're, because that, that concludes, the, the next piece is just informational. So I don't know if you wanted to devote on the contributions or hold off until we're completely done.
Wanted to go ahead and continue.
Okay.
Take care of it later after.
We won't take up too much more of your time. It's been a long presentation, but I'm really excited about this, this section here. I think this is a, a, a pretty neat analysis. We've talked a lot about, you know, why are we pre-funding this PBI? What does the PBI even mean? And so, uh, if we go to, uh, slide, uh, it would be 10100, I believe. Here we go. So we know that, uh, you know, the PBI is laid out in statute and it has a, a pretty, uh, strict formula on how this is calculated. And so basically when we have excess earnings, so we have a, a really good run-up of years of returns, then some of that excess return can be put into this PBI fund to cover a, a permanent benefit increase. And so it's the formula which I'll talk about in a moment is just simply, we look at the 10 year return. If it's above 8%, then that PBI fund is then funded. If there's not enough money in there to pay a one, at least a 1% PBI, then that money is carried forward. And then once we hit that 1% threshold, that's when the PBI would be paid. So it's not discretionary. You never take money out of that PBI fund once it gets there. And so if it's always positive, then that means there has to be a cost associated with providing this type of benefit. And so we've determined, uh, on the next slide, we've determined the cost to be roughly, um, funding it as if there was a 0.3% PBI paid every single year. And so this is kind of a big chart, but I'm going to talk about it relatively high level. And I wanted to talk about the different strategies that we looked at going all the way back to 2017 and then where we ultimately decided to go to, uh, with our strategy on, on this PBI today. Prior to 2017, there was no PBI assumption that was baked into the, into the valuation at all. So what I have here are the gains and losses that would be created. That's in that first block there. This is no PBI assumption. So if no PBI is paid, there's no gain or losses generated because we didn't think there was going to be one in the valuation. But then once one is paid, a pretty sizable loss is then generated. And so you can see two years of no PBI and then a $2,000 loss on the, the liability is generated. And a few more years of, of no gains or losses, another big loss. And then, you know, a series of years where there's, you know, no gains and losses and then two big losses. And so we looked at that and said, well, first of all, we know that there's a cost associated with the PBI, so we should be funding for it. And secondly, we have these big gain or these big losses that are just popping up, you know, every few years when that PBI is paid. And so we take one step over to the next block and said, okay, well, now let's fund this PBI at a level of 0.3% per year. And we just allow that to, to happen. We have that in the valuation, but then in a year in which a PBI was not paid, there would be a small gain that was created and the next year, another small gain. And then once one's finally paid, you'd see a loss, but not quite as large. And so what this is effectively doing is it would be pushing down that contribution rate in the years in which no PBI was paid. And then once paid and push it back up. So you get this really jagged contribution pattern, uh, if you just allow this to work. And so we said, well, that, that doesn't seem like that's a, a great method. And so when we incorporated this, we also incorporated a little bit of, of reserve for these PBIs. So in the years in which the PBI is not paid, we reserve that liability as part of the liability. And so, and that's what I have in the, the liability reserving piece there where the first two years, no PBI is paid, so we're not generating any gain or loss. But then once that is paid, instead of it being a, you know, $2,020 loss for this person, it's only a $200 loss. And so, okay, well, that, that works really well. And then we, but what happens if we had a long run of no PBIs and then one is paid? Well, that's what we have in that third column there. You can see after five years of no PBIs, see a pretty big gain and then another PBI is paid the next year, and then we see this big loss. So, okay, well, maybe we should think about mitigating that a little bit and releasing some of that liability if we have this long stretch of no PBIs being paid. And that's what we settled on. And that's in the, the very last column. And you can really see it play out, uh, you know, going to that 2037 row. Where, okay, we haven't paid a PBI in three years. Now we start to take some of that gain and we start to recognize some of that over a three-year period instead of recognizing it immediately. So again, it's another strategy to mitigate contribution volatility. And this has worked out really well. Uh, at the last time a PBI was paid, we had enough reserve where it was almost a, you know, net, net zero, um, impact on the liability when that was paid. We expect that to happen again when the next PBI is paid. On the next slide, uh, this is just a, this is just the, the math behind how the PBI balance would accrue. And we're going back four years now. And you can see that the line to their rate of return on actuarial value of assets, that's what's going to determine the amount that's funded in that PBI fund. And you can see back in, this would have been the July 1, 2022 valuation for the July 1, 2023 PBI. That return was 8.29%. So you net out 8% from that, you're left with that 0.29. You multiply that by the liability and that gives us the amount that can be put into that fund. And so at that point, it was only 0.29%. So we had money in the PBI fund, but it had not yet reached our 1% threshold. The next two years, that return was less than 8%, so it didn't add anything to it. But the carryover piece grows by 8% every year. That's in the statute. And so that's what we see, the carryover piece going from 100.6 to 108.6 to 117.4. In this most recent year, we had a, an 8.2% return on the actual value of assets. We were able to add a little bit more to that PBI fund. But it's only sitting at 0.57. So again, not enough to, to pay a PBI as a one July 2026. We did the math and we expect that when we come and do the valuation next year, after that 8% growth in that PBI balance, the carryover amount will be enough to support about a 0.6% PBI. And so then on the next slide, we say, well, what, what is it going to take for a PBI to be triggered in the next valuation? And so we have all the, these different, uh, these different permutations here. If we had a 0% return on our market value of assets next year, the AVA return is estimated to be about 7.3%. So it's less than eight. So we're not going to add anything to that 0.6. So there wouldn't, there probably would not be a PBI next year with a 0% market value return. We had a 7% return. Uh, we can add a little bit. We can add about 0.3% to that 0.6, but it still doesn't meet the threshold. And sort of that break even point or that crossover point is right around an eight and a half percent return on the market value would result in about an 8.46% on the actuarial value. And we pay a cola or pay a PBI of approximately 1.06%. And then anything above that is just going to mean that that PBI will be a little bit more. So a 10% return might trigger a 1.2% PBI. So really that, that number that we're looking for this year, somewhere right in the neighborhood between eight and nine percent, uh, return to potentially pay, uh, July 1, 2027 PBI. And, you know, that's, uh, that's pretty much it. Happy to take any questions or any thoughts that, that the board has.
Trustees, are there any questions at this time?
Benefit increase for 27. Make sure numbers you're looking at are possibly reaching that number at that point in time.
Yeah, I, I think that if the, if the return is in X, the market value return is in excess of eight and a half percent, there's a pretty high likelihood that we would surpass that 1% threshold and we would see a PBI being made. Um, you know, it could be a little close there, you know, for, for, I don't know what the exact number is, but I think if we get north of eight and a half, then there's a pretty high likelihood that it will happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
In dealing with agenda item number six, I know we need to make some motions. Uh, we need to start with item number six A. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board accept the actuarial evaluate, valuation of the plan and health benefits supplemental program as presented for the period ending June 30th, 2025 and the resulting contribution rate of 11.87% for each active employee and each employer with 0% of the employer's contribution allocated towards a 401H account effective for the 2027 fiscal year.
Also.
And I, I'll sorry, let me finish it. The board moves to accept an aggregated alternative contribution rate of 9.45% consisting of 9.41% for the plan, 0% for the health benefits supplemental program and 0.04% for the long-term disability program effective for the 2027 fiscal year.
Second.
Hearing a motion by Sarah Weber and a second by Chuck Essex, I will take a roll call vote for the motion to approve agenda item number six A as stated. Please answer I or N when I call your name. Michael Miller.
Aye.
Sarah Weber.
Aye.
Tom Connolly.
Aye.
Ashley DiMaggio Reese.
Aye.
Chuck Essex.
Aye.
Renee Gyan.
Aye.
Diane Landis.
Aye.
Jay Picounas.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairperson Miller. The vote has been taken.
Thank you. Now we move to agenda item number. Now we move to agenda item number six B. We need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board accept the actuarial evaluation of the long term disability program as presented for the period ending June 30, 2025, and the resulting contribution rate of 11.11% for each employee and each employer effective for the 2027 fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a motion by Sarah Weber and a second by Diane Landis. I will take a roll call vote for the motion to approve agenda item six B as stated. Please answer IRNA when I call your name. Michael Miller.
Aye.
Sarah Weber.
Aye.
Tom Connolly.
Aye.
Ashley DiMaggio Reese.
Aye.
Chuck Essex.
Aye.
Renee Guian.
Aye.
Diane Landis.
Aye.
Jay Pickunis.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairperson Miller. The vote has been taken.
Thank you. Now we moved to agenda item number six C. We need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board accept the actuarial evaluation of the system as presented.
We have a second.
Second.
Hearing a motion by Sarah Weber and a second by Chuck Essex. I will take a roll call vote to approve the motion or to to approve agenda item number six A as stated. Please answer IRNA when I call your name. Michael Miller.
Six C.
Six, oh, my goodness, thank you, correction sixteen. All righty, Michael Miller.
Aye.
Sarah Weber.
Aye.
Tom Connolly.
Aye.
Ashley DiMaggio Reese.
Aye.
Chuck Essex.
Aye.
Renee Guian.
Aye.
Diane Landis.
Aye.
Jay Pickunis.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairperson Miller. The vote has been taken.
Thank you. And we need the the motions, item number six V. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board move based on the current funded status and cash flow position in the system. No increases to 13th checks for retired system members and no additions to the supplemental credit balances of non-retired system members to be made.
Is there a second? Second.
Hearing a motion by Sarah Weber and a second by Tom Connolly. I will take a roll call vote for the motion to approve agenda item six D as stated. Please answer IRNA when I call your name. Michael Miller.
Aye.
Sarah Weber.
Aye.
Tom Connolly.
Aye.
Ashley DiMaggio Reese.
Aye.
Chuck Essex.
Aye.
Renee Guian.
Aye.
Diane Landis.
Aye.
Jay Pickunis.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairperson Miller. The vote has been taken.
Thank you. And we thank you for your time and your presentation.
Yep.
Chairperson Miller, the Clifton Larson Allen representative for agenda item six is now online. If you wanted to circle back to that. Or do we want to go with any PC?
Can we do it now? Okay. We're we're going to circle back to agenda item number five, I believe it is.
Thank you for that correction again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If it's okay, if I just turn over to Brittany Smith at Clifton Larson Allen to continue the agenda items. Great, thank you. Hey, Brittany.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Erica. Welcome. Very happy to be here virtually. Apologies for my tardiness. Moving on to page 31 in the materials and quickly to page 32. We're here with great tidings of joy that the audit has been completed. As a reminder to you all, I'm I'm Brittany Smith. I'm the audit manager. And we perform an audit over ASRS's ACFR, which Erica presented earlier today, as well as an audit over the GASB 68 and 75 schedules, which are used by the employers in their financial reporting. Next page. So as a reminder, these are the areas that we spend most of our time in a risk, in our risk based audit. Internal controls, investments, contributions, significant estimates, benefit payments, actual information. These are the the main audit areas for us to spend our energy based on. You know, of course, these are the big ticket items you all are discussing in your board meetings. Therefore, it makes sense that we're also likewise considering them very heavily in our audit work. Next page. As a reminder, we do work very closely with your internal audit department because we rely on work done by internal audit over testing of employer census data, which helps support our audit opinion for both the ACFR audit and the GASB 68 and 75 audit. This week, I actually participated in a training with your internal audit staff. And PS PRS's staff did an internal, a training, training day. And I was fortunate to be a speaker for them and was able to do a training on investment audit areas. So, you know, we've found your internal audit staff to be a great partners in working together. Next slide. So the very exciting news in writing here, our opinion is unmodified related to the financial statements. You'll note in the ACFR, there's many sections. Many of you have been on the board for a long time and have heard me describe all the different sections. There's a lot of, okay, you know, on the, within the financial statements themselves, that's what we're opining on, which is within, which includes the schedule fiduciary net position and changes in net position and the footnotes to the financial statements. But then as well, there's a supplemental schedule section, which we provide an in relation to opinion, which is basically saying we've audited that that information is in line with our audit of the financial statements. This includes, you know, things like your schedule of administrative expenses, schedule of investment expenses, et cetera. And then as well, unmodified opinion on your GASB 68 and 75 schedules. As a reminder, an unmodified opinion is the highest opinion you can, the best and highest opinion that you can get. And then on the right, we've got a reminder there of the unaudited components of the ACFR. The actuarial section, for example, which you've been hearing about at length. There's only, there's only certain elements of the actuaries reporting that's included in the basic financials in the, in or in the notes to the financial statements. You can set up a time with me if you want me to really bore you with all the details of the inner workings of what what is included and not included in our audit opinion. But that is the, you know, the standard set by government auditing standards. Our audit is in accordance with that. So this is very, all very normal and good. Next slide. As well as part of government auditing standards, we're required to give a report out on internal controls. And very pleased to say we had no significant deficiencies noted, material weaknesses or other matters to report. There's a higher set of standards that we follow under government auditing standards that have strict requirements on what we are required to report out to you. Happy to say we have nothing, nothing to note. Next slide. I will not read all of the text on this particular slide. There's in the packet, there are, there is our formal letter to governance. You know, some highlights, no audit adjustments or past audit adjustments, which is excellent. And management was very cooperative. We very much appreciate working with the ASRS. The staff, you know, are very timely and they're reporting to us. And, you know, you can really see that in that our timeline for our audit issuance is very steady and light clockwork issued on time every year. That really is a testament to your team doing good work and doing it on time and providing that to us makes makes for a smooth audit. And, you know, that's in, you know, in great part to Erica and her team. So big thank you. We'll also point you all on the top right to the estimate section. Key estimates in our audit, of course, are the valuation on alternative investments, the valuation of your total pension liability, net pension liability, and as well as the related disclosures related to OPEB liability, et cetera. So, lastly, also in your packet, I do want to call out that there is a signed management representation letter as an attachment to that governance letter. This is the letter that includes a long list of representations that the ASRS management team signs off saying, you know, that they've provided us complete information. They've let us know about any fraud, et cetera, et cetera. All the things that we need from management for us to do our jobs as your external auditors. Next slide. So brief training on GASB. Would like to give a little update if we go to the next slide on upcoming GASB standards. I've been saying to you all, the GASB is very, been very kind to the pensions lately after giving us a lot of curveballs about 10 years ago. There's been not too many GASBs that have had any exciting impacts on the ACFR. You haven't seen any big, big changes if you've been paying close attention, reading the full ACFR each year. But this next year, there is a bigger GASB coming up. It's not too, too impactful, but the management discussion and analysis has, will have revised requirements and format. So stay tuned, you'll see at least some, some difference next year. So that's the, but most of, you see a bulleted list. Most of those items like budgetary comparison, proprietary fund, don't impact the ASRS. You know, we're fiduciary fund reporter, but that management discussion and analysis, which puts the financial statements in layman's terms for the common reader, is the GASB wants to help make that even clearer for, you know, layman taxpayers who may be looking at the ACFR. So we'll be working with the team to consider that new GASB. Next slide. Capital assets, you know, not a material audit area when it comes to the ASRS. So not too much impact here. I will move it on. I think we'll skip the last couple. I, if you could, I believe that's the end of the deck. Is there any, we go to page, yes, questions and feedback, any questions from anyone?
Any questions from any trustees?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a a comment congratulating ASRS and Erica and your, your gang. An unmodified opinion is absolutely the goal. And it sounds like you all have been wonderful in working with the auditors, timely responses. And and it's a really good relationship. And I I really do congratulate you on on all of this and the way you're working together, but on what you've accomplished. This is a big, this is a big, a big audit and congratulations. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all of your hard work and dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. As we transition to agenda item number seven, I think we're going to take just a little short little break. I'll say no more than 10 minutes. And we will come back. Great, thank you.
The time is 10:38. We're going to take a break.
The time is 10:38. We're going to take a break.
Busy day and then tomorrow is a busy day. Slides are not that hard. My, my time is back to equilibrium until like Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm going to take a half day Wednesday.
Oh, good for you.
Take Friday.
I think I'm on Friday.
We will bring this uh meeting back to order and we are now at agenda item number seven. Presentation, discussion, and appropriate action regarding NEPC investment reporting. Executive summary and the investment committee presentation. So Rose, I think you're on.
Thank you. For the record, Rose Dean, partner at NEPC. Um, today I'll be presenting to you our second quarter 2025 investment oversight report. But given that it's been a while, uh, the market environment has been updated in this presentation. And I'll just make a few comments toward that. If we can turn to page 107. Great. So if you recall during the second quarter, uh, US stocks were up about 10%, which brought the, the year-to-date returns for the first half of 2025 to about 6%. Um, you see here the performance, uh, market performance during the third quarter. It was another very strong one for the stock markets. Um, the markets were up anywhere from 5 to 12%. Small-cap stocks were actually up the most at over 12%. Um, and this stock market performance was partially boosted uh by the Fed's uh rate cuts and the signals that they were sending to say we're starting to ease uh our monetary policy. So overall, if you look at that quarter column, you see all black numbers. So across the capital markets, from stocks to bonds and real estate and commodities, we're all generally up for the quarter. You can also see this on page 109. So if you move from uh left to right, uh, you see, you saw a very strong performance in global equities represented here by MSCI, AquiIMI. And then US large-cap stocks, and then also uh emerging market stocks did quite well for the quarter as well. Um, they actually led the stock markets at a 10.6% return for the, for the third quarter. And then the Bloomberg indices you see here are the bond market indices, again, positive return for bonds as well as stocks during the third quarter. If we move to page 113. So we see uh here a, a few tech names or AI-related names here. So there's a lot of concerns, obviously, about how much of a rally we've seen in these tech names. And the rally actually continues. Um, during the third quarter, we saw the AI rally. Uh, if you look at that Chem, Cambricon um column there, we actually had to cut off this chart at 50%. The third quarter return for that stock was 121%. So a bit of exuberance continues in this uh tech market here. There's some parallels, obviously, being drawn to the 2001.com bubble. But we, we did see some pullback in the last uh couple of weeks in the dot com or, or the tech stocks rather. But still very strong returns uh across the board year-to-date. The last comment I'll make is on page 114. So this chart shows the US dollar performance for the three quarters for every year since 1971. And what you note here is 2025 was the fourth weakest three-quarter performance in terms of US dollars. So overall, the weakness in the dollar actually gave a boost to international stock returns. Because when you convert that back to US dollar returns, uh, it's a lot stronger. So there's multiple things impacting the dollar performance. Uh, there's obviously questions about the US economy weakening. And then generally, uh, investors rebalancing out of US stocks into uh international stocks, given that it looks a lot cheaper versus the tech-heavy US stocks. And then generally, US Fed in the trajectory of cutting interest rates and lower interest rates tend to lead to a, a weaker dollar. So these things are obviously impacting returns and a globally diversified portfolio. Uh, just something to keep in mind as we uh look at market performance uh in, in the near future. So any questions on that? Uh, if not, I'll turn to the oversight report on page 124. Perfect. Thank you. Again, this is a report as of end of the second quarter of 2025 or the fiscal year. So the summary here of your ongoing objectives and the scorecard as to how the portfolio is meeting these objectives. Um, we'll note here that the portfolio performance is meeting your objectives fully for objectives one, uh, four and six. And these are uh maximizing return at an appropriate level of risk. And number four is to return, uh, your uh attaining returns above the actuarial, actuarial rate of return for all periods. And then having enough cash flow liquidity uh in objective number six. The rest of the objectives were met partially, and this is sort of a ongoing theme, given how, how strong the public markets have been and private markets investments just not being able to keep up on the shorter term. Um, it will go into more details about that. But overall, on the longer-term uh historical performance, all of the objectives are being met one through five, and we have no concerns at this point. And we're not recommending that you take any action uh by the, by the board. One thing to note here, based on the investment committee feedback when we presented this report, there was a request to include the change from last quarter in terms of the goals met. How, if there were any changes in terms of which goals were met last quarter uh versus this quarter. So we'll be adding that uh starting the third quarter report. If we move to page 126. Great. Thank you. So the total fund returned a, a quite strong 6% just in that one quarter. Um, you see that for the fiscal year, the return was a very strong 9.89%. However, as I noted in the summary page, the portfolio did underperform the PALLIS benchmark for the one-year and the three-year periods. This underperformance, uh, basically on a time-weighted basis, uh, is largely being driven by private equity and credit asset classes against their public markets benchmark. So at this point, I'll jump to page 137 because um it'll show you the uh performance by composite. And you can see exactly what happened in terms of the asset class returns. So the top line shows the total fund historical time-weighted returns. You see that for the one- and three-year period, um, you're underperforming the benchmark about 30 basis points for both those periods. If you go down to the domestic equity composite, as well as the international equity composite for those periods, you're actually um outperforming the benchmark. Where you see the underperformance, as I mentioned, is the private equity for the one- and three-year period versus the benchmark. And then same with the credit. Um, the benchmark for credit is, just as a reminder, is a leveraged loan benchmark plus 250 bit uh premium on top of that. So these two asset classes on the shorter term underperform the strong public markets-based benchmark on a time-weighted basis. Um, but what I'd like to point you to is the fact that over the long term, the absolute return, for example, for private equity, the 10-year return is 12.5%. And for the credit portfolio, the return is 8.6%. So obviously, that level of return is very additive to the total fund beating the uh, uh, assumed rate of return of 7%. That outperformance has been very additive to the total fund return, uh, being able to uh beat that, that actuarial return benchmark. And if you look at the top line, again, the total fund return, the number in the parentheses next to those portfolio returns show where you rank amongst your peer funds. And for the five- and 10-year periods, you're in the top quartile in terms of performance amongst the peer, uh, peer group. So it's been a tough uh benchmark to beat for the private asset classes. But y- you don't expect to have a short-term um match between public market and private markets. And we want to keep that longer-term perspective for those investments.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Rose, could you also discuss a little bit about the benchmark changes we're having in this space? And how it's going to lock in those public market relative returns, please?
Sure. And, and uh, we mentioned this last time, but starting in the third quarter, uh, according to your approved benchmark change when we did the asset allocation, the private equity and credit asset class benchmarks will officially be changed to the peer group benchmark of MSCI Burgess Private Equity and, and credit uh benchmarks. But I'll note that that will be going forward. We're not changing that historically. It's only going to be changing going forward. So it will take time. Still, there will be a mismatch in terms of historical returns. But going forward, that should uh help um that mismatch go away over time. Thank you, Mike. Um, just quickly going through uh some risk statistics on page 129. Thank you. So we always like to take a look at um how much volatility your portfolio, portfolio has in terms of generating these returns. So the portfolio returned uh 10.39% for the five-year period. That's the first column you see in that slide. And that's exceeding the benchmark return of 10.19 for that same period. The portfolio ranked in the top 12th percentile among the peer group. And the median return, if you see in that table, the median return during that period was 8.88%. So this portfolio significantly outperformed the median uh peer group return. And then if you look at the volatility that was associated with the return in that five-year period on that next column, that standard deviation, you see that volatility was only 6.86%. And that puts the fund at the lowest 12th percentile volatility among the peer group. So the median uh fund in your peer group actually had a uh volatility that was much higher, but then a return that was much lower. So that shows up in that sharp ratio column on the third column. So for that five-year period, your sharp ratio or risk-adjusted return was 1.07, which is in the top sixth percentile, so is significantly better than the median risk-adjusted return. Which means your portfolio implementation is generating more return per unit of risk being taken uh in terms of the standard deviation measure. And then uh lastly, I'll turn to page 43. Just to note, I, I'm sorry. Not the right page. Uh, it is the Asset Class Committee um, uh, Meeting Summary for the third quarter, which is page 140. So there were uh six committee meetings that took place during the third quarter, where there was three recommendations were made with respect to private equity managers that were approved. Six credit manager recommendations were approved and one real estate recommendation was approved. So NEPC uh was a observer of those meetings and all of those um recommendations and approval process was according to the process in place. So we don't have any concerns at this point about the portfolio. Um, it is going to be a very volatile market going forward, and you will see this shorter-term deviation in terms of performance versus your benchmark. Uh, we'll keep you posted uh in terms of being your board fiduciary oversight to see if there's any um issues uh that arise. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions, Rose, from trustees? Hearing that, thank you very much. We appreciate.
Hearing none? Thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation. With that, we move to agenda item number eight. Presentation, discussion and appropriate action regarding the ASRS Investment Program, Executive Summary of the Investment Committee Presentations. So I'm betting Mr. Patari is going to take over.
Thank you, Chairman, uh, Chairman Miller. Uh, for the record, Mike Patari, CIO Arizona State Retirement System. Uh, Rose has already covered performance at a high level and more than half of you have already seen these, this, uh, um, June thirtieth, uh, two thousand and twenty-five reports. So I'll just kind of limit my topics to things that I think are, are relevant and important. We could turn to page one fifty-three of seven twenty-four, please. So this is a performance, again, Rose, Rose mentioned that the only reason I'm bringing it up is, um, if you recall, uh, a few years back, three or four years back, when I joined, one, three, five-year numbers, excess return numbers were, were negative. Since then, Samer, Cole, Vicente, um, have returned back to, uh, in tried into strategies that we had in place for years and some new ones. And the performance, the excess performance, excess returns, uh, shows the, the fruit of that, of that effort. So right now, we only have one, um, period ending, uh, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, uh, ten-year period with negative performance. Uh, we expect that over the next few years to drop away and there to be not any negative excess for performance because of, uh, the robustness of what's, what's, uh, being done on the internal portfolios. Page one fifty-four. Look at the top left chart, you'll see that the total public equity portfolio represents sixty-five percent of the overall portfolio. That is one hundred percent managed internally. So again, it's Samer's team, Samer, Cole, Vicente. Um, I, my, my fingerprints are, uh, on some of the long-term historical performance because I was here. We brought assets in-house, so, um, we've been managing public equity for close to over twenty-five years. Um, so great, um, good performance, great, uh, experience. On a go-forward basis, one of the things we're looking to do is, is bring non-US assets in-house. I'm hoping to do that this next year. One of the first things we're going to do is bring FX trading in-house. You need to have FX trading in order to convert your, buy your, uh, euro-denominated securities in, in Europe. If you're managing to an EFA portfolio, uh, and then when you're selling something, you also need to kind of convert the currency from Euro or pound sterling over to US. So that's a function we need to have in-house first, and then we can move. Yes, sir.
Hearing the foreign component in-house.
It'll be, it'll be local security. So that's one of the things I did when I was up in Oregon. We brought non-US equity in-house and emerging markets and equity in-house, but first we brought the FX. So I've had the experience of doing that. It's just, it was just a matter of our ability to, the resources we have and all the other projects we wanted to do. I'll be playing a role in this as well. So I'll be, be the FX person for a while until I train someone, till we have some redundancy in there. So it's, uh, it's something we can, we can do. We're looking to do this next year. But again, need to have FX in place. We have FX, FX in place, um, then we can, we can manage this portfolio. But beyond that, we can also manage the flows that happen in the private equity portfolio and any other portfolio that, that, that goes out to other countries. So for instance, we'll have pound sterling-denominated private equity funds, also euro-denominated private equity funds. When they need cash, they need capital calls. They're not asking US dollars or asking for pound sterling or for Euro. And right now, our custody bank serves that purpose, but that's something we can easily bring in-house. So that ends up being a total, on average, I'd say about eighty tickets a year to, uh, to do that, those types of exchanges for our private markets, um, both ways and capital calls and distribution. So it's not, it's not a really heavy load. It's just a matter of having the infrastructure placed. So that's, that's one of the things we're excited about doing this coming year, assuming nothing else gets in its way. Um, but again, we're looking to bring some non-US assets in-house, not all of them, just, just a piece of it. And then we'll determine, um, you know, w- we do have the resources, but whether it makes sense. Some of our external managers do add some value, so we don't want to take away from that, those strategies and just bring it into house and not have that same level of strategy. So it's something we need to discuss internally and decide how we're going to go about doing that. Uh, we could turn to page one fifty-five. This would be the bottom bullet point we had when we were presenting this back September, I'm sorry, um, June thirtieth. Uh, our view that, um, on a go-forward basis, we'd be, we'd be close to sixty-four hundred by the end of the year. Well, we surpassed that already. So the market this morning, the S and P five hundred was sixty-seven hundred, was up two percent. It crashed. It's a little negative territory right now. It's a sixty-six one oh. But our new house view is that, uh, we're targeting about seven thousand, global seven thousand, plus or minus two hundred by, by, in the next few months. So we think the equity market still has legs. So that's a little bit of a change from this stated, uh, material. We can go to page. See, page one sixty-one. This is private equity. Um, again, this is, uh, a little bit older, but it just shows, um, the quality of the work, again, Samer, and this would be Samer and, um, Mike Copeland and your Scheneritz, the work and the effort they have done in trying to find only first and second quartile private equity funds. Um, there's lots of, uh, research out there that shows this big spread between first quartile and fourth quartile funds. And typically, fiftieth percentile outperforms equity, so we want to be above that. So that's what this goal has been, and that's what the effort has been. A couple of the things that we've done within the private equity program is brought a co-invest program in-house. And if you recall, our goal was to have that to be thirty percent of the overall private equity portfolio. The reason co-invest is important is because typically it's done at zero percent management, say, zero percent carry, which means we're not paying a profit to the managers. So we're able to have, i- 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 you can look at it two ways. It can be as a cost savings or as a return enhancer. We look at it as a return enhancer. We have a third party that helps us with that, so we pay them a little bit of management fee, and they do participate in a little carry, but that program is done really well. And right now, we're about fifteen percent, we're about halfway into that thirty percent implementation of the total, um, private equity program. So we're about halfway there. So another couple of years, and we should be fully thirty percent of the private equity program. Another thing that we just started this year is, um, getting into secondaries. So, um, buying secondaries, uh, opportunistically. And what secondaries are, and the reason secondaries are important is because many market participants, many other pension plans, um, got over-allocated. Could be pension plans, could be foundations, could be foundations that got over-allocated to private equity. There's no real easy way to rebalance out of that. So what they're having to do is they're going through their GPs, the partners that they have, where they're doing it themselves, and they're selling their positions in these various private equity funds. And they pay a price for that. They have to take maybe ten percent off, fifteen percent off. So in this environment, it pays to look at those, to evaluate and start, and start investing in those. And we have about, I think, two hundred and fifty million invested in secondaries. It's not going to be something that's in perpetuity in the private equity program because eventually people are not going to need to sell their, their, their positions because they're, they're going to be at target. But right now, we're, we're taking advantage of overhang in a lot of private equity portfolios across the country coming from public pension plans, from foundations. So a couple of highlights there, private equity. We could turn to page, um, let's see, one sixty-nine. I apologize. Let's go to page one, um, one sixty-six. Top table performance for, uh, the real estate portfolio. If you look at the excess returns, which is like the third line down on the, on the top chart, uh, outstanding excess performance, thirty-five basis, I'm sorry, one hundred and sixty-six base points excess performance for the one-year, the five-year, two hundred and twenty-eight since inception, thirty-four basis points, but solid outperformance. Uh, but if you look at the top-line numbers, um, the two years, two point eight four, five-year, four point two nine, it's, it's not really contributing to hitting our actuarial assumptions. But it's just, it's the overhang that's happening in real estate. The market's been, uh, hit pretty hard, starting with real estate. Um, but we, we're, we're still confident in, in the asset class. But that is one of the reasons why in the recent years, it's come down from a twenty percent allocation, the overall portfolio just seventeen and now to a fifteen. Um, we turn to page one sixty-nine. This shows the overall weightings in the portfolio. So you'll see relative to the benchmark. We're not trying to meet the benchmark. We're aware of what's happening, but relative to the benchmark, this gives you an idea of where our confidence levels are. Uh, we have a pretty high allocation in multifamily and apartment. The industrial allocation was a little bit higher than it was before because we've taken the opportunity to recapitalize and sell some of the industrial assets at, at really good prices. So that's why you'll see the, the, the difference there. But again, we don't manage to the real estate or to the, to the benchmark. We're aware of what's going on, and we have our own views, our own forward-looking views on, on, on the asset class. On the far right-hand side, you'll see the other eighteen percent relative to the benchmark being ten percent. And this captures a lot of the other opportunistic things we're doing, a lot of the, uh, um, operating companies we have and things like data centers we've been investing in the last two or three years. And the value of those things have really increased quite a bit. So that's why you need to see. Turn to page, um, I won't cover credit. Rose did a pretty good job of covering credit and covering private equity. And again, I would just say that, you know, we are changing the benchmarks. We're not going backwards and changing the history of the benchmarks. So the underperformance that you saw in private equity, the underperformance that you saw in credit will take some time to eat away at with the new, more appropriate benchmark. Um, just go to page. Page one eighty-six, please. This brings us forward a little bit. So this is preliminary returns as of October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, three takeaways, uh, the market value as of October thirtieth, we're at sixty-two billion, so still above sixty billion. Um, the numbers, um, one-year, three-year, five, ten and twenty, all those numbers are by the actuarial, uh, return assumption of seven percent. And I hope Paul, was hoping Paul was going to be here because he likes seeing those numbers being, we all like seeing those numbers being of the actuarial assumption. Performance not too different than six thirty as far as excess, excess return performance. Um, but that, that encapsulates everything that we covered as of six thirty, two thousand and twenty-five. These are my formal comments, and if there's any questions, be more than happy to take.
Trustees have any questions at this time? Hearing none? We'll move forward. This brings us to agenda item number nine, Presentation, Discussion and Appropriate Action Regarding Risk Analysis and Investment Compliance, Executive Summary of, of the Investment Committee Presentation. Uh, Mr. Butler's got this.
Yes, uh, thank you for the record, Robert Butler, Investment Risk and Compliance Officer. Uh, like the two previous reports, this is a short version of the presentation that was given on October first with the information as of the end of June. So, uh, sorry, I should have said page one eighty-eight to start. And if I go quick and you have questions, please stop me. Uh, we'll move ahead to page one eighty-nine, showing the correlation matrix. And just as a reminder, I guess green is good. Um, when you look at this chart, just showing that there's a lower correlation, especially with interest rates sensitive to the rest of the portfolio. And having that, um, lower correlation helps smooth out the returns of the portfolio. And then page one ninety. On the left side, this is the dollar allocation and the different asset classes. And the right side shows the contribution to volatility. So you'll see that there's a higher contribution from both public and private equity. However, our plan overall contribution to volatility from equity is much lower in like a typical sixty-forty portfolio, sixty percent equities, forty percent bonds. And that portfolio, despite only sixty percent invested in equities, the contribution of volatility percent from equities is close to ninety-nine percent. Good morning. And then page one ninety-two, I guess, stress again, this is hypothetical. This is not what actually happened in these past stress scenarios. This is as if we had today's portfolio or the June thirtieth portfolio and went through similar stresses as these past ones, how we think the portfolio would perform. And I may get rid of some of the decimal points to kind of emphasize this is more of a art than science and don't want someone to say, you said it was going to be point five nine and it's point six or something bad happens. Then on page one ninety-three, just to have a summary of our largest external managers. As a reminder, we are our own largest manager and will grow as we bring, uh, non-US equities in-house. Uh, but you can see the concentration, um, in assets with some of our larger, both private credit and real estate managers. So any questions on the risk section? All right. And then briefly, one ninety-four, just a summary of the compliance. We had, uh, no exceptions on our pre-trade compliance report and nothing major to report from either our, uh, custody banks' monthly reports and then from the private market side. And I guess I should probably let everyone know that we will be doing a deep dive into the private markets compliance program at the March IC meeting and a deep dive on the modeling with MSCI at the December IC meeting. So I hope everyone's very excited for that. That concludes my presentation.
Sure, we're very excited. You hardly wait.
Yes.
Any questions from trustees? Hearing none? I think we will move on to agenda item number two. Thank you. Presentation, Discussion and Appropriate Action Regarding Staff Recommended Updates to the ASRS Board Governance, Governance Policy Handbook. Um, and I think this is Mr. Mattson.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I think this is a short agenda item. Uh, we're going to be covering, uh, the significant part of this governance handbook at Monday's ad hoc. The Monday's ad hoc, we're going through a lot of things. One is just, what are the key parts of the governance handbook? So that's not the purpose of this, uh, uh, agenda item. The purpose of this agenda item from our staff's perspective is just to clean up a few typos that we found. There's mares that didn't have caps or had caps that shouldn't have, uh, the word chair. Use it consistently and refer to a chairperson. They're really what I would consider, um, a de minimis and typographical, uh, equivalent, uh, edits. So with that, I'm certainly open to any comments, but this is what I see as a cleanup of a document each year. We should, approximately every three years, come back for a conceptual discussion. We come back every year for, uh, a verbiage review. And if legislation has passed, for instance, we add another line of who's responsible for that. Other than that, uh, we're really, really just looking for a, um, acceptance of the, uh, grammatical type error cleanup. Thank you.
With that said, um, do we have a motion regarding agenda item number ten?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the board approve the recommended revisions to the ASRS Board Governance Policy Handbook Updates as presented by staff.
Second.
Hearing a motion by Sarah Weber and a second by Ashley Demagio-Reese, I will take a roll call vote for the motion to approve the staff recommended updates to the Board Governance Policy Handbook as presented. Please answer I or N when I call your name. Michael Miller.
Aye.
Sarah Weber.
Aye.
Tom Connolly.
Aye.
Ashley Demagio-Reese.
Aye.
Chuck Essex.
Aye.
Renee Guillen.
Aye.
Ian Landis.
Aye.
Dave Pitkounas.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairperson Miller. The vote has been taken.
Thank you. And this moves us to agenda item, um, number eleven, uh, Presentation, Discussion and Appropriate Action Regarding Board Self-Evaluation, Material and Distribution. Uh, a comment that I would just make is, I think Melanie will be sending that out. And we will use the form and we respond to you, as I recall.
Yes, so last year, we created this particular, these documents in Govenda as surveys, and I'll just redistribute those this year. We'll just copy those and send them out.
Thank you. And we will give you results at a board meeting. Agenda item number twelve, Summary of Current Events. Mr. Mattson.
Uh, we have material in the, uh, uh, under this agenda item, but there's nothing that arises to the, um, level that I would like to display to the, uh, board. The statistics on turnaround time and so forth are in line with expectations. If there is a deviation, staff has adjusted to make sure that we meet expectations, but there's nothing substantive to mention. Thank you.
And any addition to supplemental operations reports on what's in there?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this brings us to agenda item number fourteen, Call to the Public. Melanie, do we have any members of the public who should speak?
We do not have any public for speaking, speak.
And that takes us to agenda item number fifteen. Board members, are there any requests for future agenda items? Not hearing any, speak now or for her, hold your peace. Hey, uh, the next regular public ASRS board meeting is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-six at nine AM right here in the boardroom. I'd also remind everybody regarding the ad hoc meeting on Monday, which also starts at nine o'clock here in the boardroom. So, um, make sure that's on your calendar. And then, um, I don't, agenda item number seventeen, presentation discussion, appropriate action regarding the two thousand twenty-four review and employment agreement of the executive director of the ASRS.
Um, Mr. Chair, I move that the board go into executive session for agenda item number seventeen pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four three one dot zero three A one for the purpose of the discussion of the director's annual review.
Second. Thank you. Hearing a motion by Sarah Weber and a second by Ashley Demagio Reese. I will take a roll call vote for the motion to move into executive session for the purpose of the director's annual review. Please answer I or N when I call your name. Michael Miller.
Aye.
Sarah Weber.
Aye.
Tom Connolly.
Aye.
Ashley Demagio Reese.
Aye.
Chuck Essex.
Aye.
Renee Guillen.
Aye.
Diane Landis.
Aye.
Dave Pitkounas.
Aye.
Thank you, Chairperson Miller. The vote has been taken. The time is eleven twenty-five.
Melanie, do we need to remind Jay and Renee what they need to do?
Yes, sir. I was just about ready to do that. Uh, Mr. Guillen and Mr. Pitkounas, if you will exit from the Zoom, uh, appointment and then log into the Google meets. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, the time is now 12:16. Chair Person Miller, we are ready to call the open session meeting back to order when you're ready, and after you call the meeting to order, I'll take a quick roll call to ensure we have a call.
This time we call this meeting back to order.
Alrighty, for the record, will the following trustees please confirm you are in attendance by stating here as I call your name, Michael Miller.
Here.
Sarah Weber.
Here.
Tom Connolly.
Here.
Ashley DiMaggio Rees.
Here.
Chuck Essex.
Here.
Renee Guian.
Here.
Diane Landis.
Here.
Jay Pitkounas.
Here.
Thank you Chair Person Miller, the vote has been taken.
Thank you. This time I think we have a motion to be made.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the executive director position of ASRS be reclassified to a grade 40, and the employment contract for Mr. Mattson be amended as discussed in executive session.
You have a motion, do we have a second? Second?
Hearing a motion by Sarah Weber and a second by Tom Connolly, I will take a roll call vote for the motion to approve the employment agreement changes as discussed for the ASRS director in executive session. Please answer either or any when I call your name. Michael Miller.
Aye.
Sarah Weber.
Aye.
Tom Connolly.
Aye.
Ashley DiMaggio Rees.
Aye.
Chuck Essex.
Aye.
Renee Guian.
Aye.
Diane Landis.
Aye.
Jay Pitkounas.
Aye.
Thank you Chair Person Miller, the vote has been taken.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, just a reminder of Monday's meeting at nine o'clock here, and with that, we're adjourned. Always love to.
Thank you.
Thank you, the time is 12:19.